Meeting of the Independence Planning Commission. Again, a little different format. We're not real practiced at it, but we bear with us. We have an agenda that we're following. So if you're here to speak to a certain case, you need to pay attention to when your case comes up. And when you do speak, you need to give us your name and address. Make sure you're speaking to the right case that you came to this meeting for. If any of the folks who are on here that have not used this before have questions or having some difficulty, we're going to allow a little period here for some of those folks, if they do have questions to ask the, Jordan, this is a little box called Planning Staff. City staff member who will give you some instructions. So if somebody has questions now is the time to ask them. If I don't hear anything after a minute or two, then we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Okay. During the meeting, there is a, just make sure that you're listening and you're listening quietly and there's no sound in the background. There is a way to turn off your microphone. That doesn't happen because it's kind of interrupts the flow of the meeting. And it's confusing because we can't tell who's talking or who's saying something. So please be aware of that. Also be aware that after each case, members of the commission, there will be a roll call and they will vote. So if your name is similar or you think we're talking to you and you're not a member of this commission, please don't vote. All right. We'll just go ahead and proceed. The first case we have is case.
Actually, this is our consent agenda. Let's do the roll.
Okay, do the roll call.
All right, Commissioner Drier.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Preston?
Here.
Commissioner Weir? Commissioner Wiley?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
And Chairman Ashbaugh?
I am here.
All right.
You get a response from everybody?
I didn't hear anything from Commissioner Weir. I see he's signed in. I'm not sure if he's having mic issues or.
Okay. Shows his, my screen shows his microphone is on, but but we'll just go ahead and continue. Commissioner Weir, if you can't talk to us or you're having an issue, just keep trying and Jordan, do you have a phone number or something that you could give? Him or you don't want to?
Did I hear something in the background? Did I hear it in the background? Okay, no, I may have Miranda who's on the call. Reach out to him if she's got his email or phone number to on the issue and if we're able to get him in so we can hear him, we'll do that.
All right. Well, meanwhile, we'll just continue with the meeting. We'll go to the first item on our meeting is a case number two zero dash three two zero dash zero two final plat for Stone Canyon Third Plat. This is on the consent agenda. Anybody has any questions, you can ask them. Otherwise, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve case twenty dash three two zero dash zero two final plat, Stone Canyon Third Plat.
Thank you. Heather, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Preston.
I think Cindy. I think Cindy got that second, Billy. All right. Okay. I believe we're ready to vote. If anybody has any questions, ask now. If not, please let's have the vote.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir, are you there? Okay. Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
And Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Number two zero dash three two zero dash zero two final plat, Stone Canyon Third Plat has been approved.
Can we go ahead and do the continued case which is number three right now? So do that.
All right. Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Item number three on your agenda. That's the one you're talking about, correct? Okay. Item number three is case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero seven special use permit for one six nine two zero east US twenty four highway. We want to continue that case till April twenty eighth. I need a motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Preston.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Who said that?
Weir.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Preston, Joe, Weir, thank you.
Okay.
Take the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Drier?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, are you there yet?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case two zero dash two hundred dash zero seven special use permit at one six nine two zero east US twenty four highway has been continued till the April twenty eighth commission meeting. So the next case we have is item number two on the agenda, case two zero dash two hundred down four six special use permit for one 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 five South Chrisler Avenue with the city. Before the city gives the report, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, is that you, John?
Yeah, I'm representing La Brougeville Real Estate.
Thank you. We just want to make sure that the applicant, somebody is here. So with the city staff, please present, give their presentation, please.
Yes, um, this location as you know is at the intersection of.
Let this, we'll let the city staff.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and put the mute all button. We're getting a lot of feedback here. So just all of you planning commission members be aware when it comes time to vote that you're going to need to unmute yourselves.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is case twenty two hundred oh six, La Brazo Real Estate Holding request a special use permit for automotive sales. So this is our vicinity map. As you can see, this is a a property located at the northeast corner of Chrisler Avenue and twenty third street. Let's see. There we go. This is a slide of the surrounding zonings. This is a mixture of industrial and commercial zonings in this vicinity. This property is on C two. You've got C two to the north and I one to the northwest, to the east and even to the south across twenty third street. The areas along the corridor to the west along twenty third street are zoned generally C two, general commercial as well. A comprehensive plan here. There we go. Envisions this area for commercial uses. With some recreation to the south and some government institutional there to the northwest. As you can see from the aerial photograph, you can see the existing canopy, the building. That was a generally a service station with bays and and pumps at one point. And then there's a, a commercial building lies to the north. You've got a gas station and single family homes to the west. You got the Chrisler Stadium to the southeast across twenty third street and on the entrance to that new CBS that was built a few years ago there to the southeast. The applicant intends to convert this underutilized property here at the northeast corner of that intersection into an automotive sales lot. The property contains an existing two thousand one hundred fifty eight square foot structure and a large paved driving surface out front. No change to the building footprint and there are no structures planned, new structures planned. The little pervious green space on the site is to the east along the banks of the creek that runs behind the property to the east. Much of the property therefore is within the floodstone A and the city stream buffer setback as well. Water pollution control may require additional limitations or prohibitions on activity that may that may cause or allow any kind of illicit discharges. They may also require a detailed pollution prevention plan. A drawing showing a detailed landscaping plan and the stream buffer will have to be provided with the administrative adjustment application concerning the, the lack of green space. Landscaping required by staff may involve some plantings in what little green space we have in lieu of some of the street trees and parking lot perimeter plantings and, and building for an entrance landscaping requirements. There may be some spots that we can strategically have saw cut and create some green space within that paved surface out front. The applicant's not doing any kind of major facade changes to the building. Just mainly cosmetic improvements, painting, whatnot. Here's the site plan. The earlier plan had indicated staff parking behind, there shouldn't be any paving of the green area behind. In fact, there's not room between the building and the creek. So we'll need to work with the applicant on where those employee spots will be. The customer parking will be up front with or in front of the building, adjacent to the building, and then around the periphery of the paved surface area would be where the merchandise, the automobiles for display would be shown. This is the notification map of the property ownerships within a hundred and eighty five feet that were provided notification of this special use request. Real quickly, I'll go through some of the pictures here. This is standing right there on the property, looking at the building and the and the canopy to the southeast, looking across twenty third street toward Chrisler Stadium. This is the north side of the building. This is from looking at the intersection northeastward at the southeast side of the building there. This is that creek flood zone area that lies behind the building. This is the antique retail shop, antique mall that lies just to the north. There's the city's public works facility straight in front of us and, and then that white house and another single family house lie to the south of that. This is looking back east along twenty third street at Chrisler Stadium. And looking south down Chrisler, south of twenty third street. And looking west down the twenty third street corridor, west of the property. And this is right there on the north, the gas station that lies immediately to the northwest of the intersection. Staff recommends approval of this case with the following conditions. Number one, work with staff to create a landscape plan with, with providing, with plantings provided per code as much as the Director of Community Development deems feasible to pursue a, number two, to pursue a administrative adjustment for the required landscaping that is not feasible. Do this in conjunction with the approval of a change of use permit or antenna finish. And number three, of course, do not pave behind the building in the stream buffer side zone. Do not create any kind of additional impervious surfaces at all on the property. So that concludes my presentation and Ray taking questions from you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Does any of the commissioners have questions for Brian? I of course have one. I pretty much agree with everything you said. I didn't know if there's any thought going to be given to the post and chain or it's not really chain, but it's the wire rope out along the front of the building and the side. I understand that probably needs to be there or something, but is there going to be an upgrade to that or do you know?
It's something we could, when we review the construction or the the site plan that we can see if we can't have some here that removed or some kind of alternative. They'll, they may want something to secure the cars on the lot of some nature.
I totally, I totally agree. That's why they need it there. I just didn't know if that was something that was allowed to code or if that's something that you would be looking at.
It looks in pretty shabby shape. If you go out there and stand on the sidewalk. Yeah, I think they would need, need something else.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have questions of Brian at this time? Okay. Now's the time for the applicant to go ahead and state their case. And if you would, please give us your name and your address for the record.
Hello?
Hello?
John Carnes for the applicant. Two twenty two West Maple, Independence, Missouri, six four zero five zero. Are you ready?
We're ready. Thank you.
First commissioner, addressing your concern, my client plans a total renovation. He's set aside sixty thousand dollars minimal. And those wires that you see there, I think are remnants of a prior use. And I believe they will be gone. And of course, we've reviewed what the city is requiring. My client has no opposition to what the city wants to do there for the site improvement. And as you may have observed, it's an interesting corner that it's maybe had its day as a commercial area, but I think this will utilize something that has been sitting there for some time that has been an eyesore and a non-tax producer for the community. So we will, my client will be complying with what the city has required and wants on that side and make it aesthetically improved.
Okay. Is that all you have to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this case?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know I'm going to be unmuting all. So callers and people participating, please try to keep down any noise. This will allow any of the callers who are here to comment on this to be heard. Thank you.
Okay, so have you done that?
Yeah, everyone's unmuted now.
Okay, well, I'll say it again. This is an open meeting, so there's, this is the time for the public to make comment if they want. The first part of this is anyone who is in agreement or would like to support this case, they're, and they want to speak to this case, they can do so now. Okay. I don't hear anybody wanting to say. So the next part is anyone who is opposed to this case or who simply has questions can speak now. Okay. I don't think anybody's trying to wants to speak to this, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this case. And would ask commissioners to either ask questions or to provide a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and all one more time. Preston, you guys.
Mr. Chair? Preston here. Mr. Chair, my recognized.
Eric, Eric just needs to honor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Billy, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, yes, you are recognized.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Let's just follow on to the comment of the counselor that this is an unsighted corner. It's an eyesore. It has been for the years that I've passed it. While I'm normally not in favor of the proliferating number of automobile lots, I think to get a sixty thousand dollar improvement to this site should be a welcomed thing for this intersection. And I'm certainly going to move in favor of it and barring any other comment, I'm going to move for the passage of this case number two zero dash two zero zero dash zero six special use permit at eleven fifteen South Chrisler Avenue. Considering the, in addition, with the recommendations of staff as cited, numbers one, two, and three.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Preston. Motion's been made. So if somebody can either second or if they also have questions, I'd rather, if anybody has a question, rather than ask their question first.
I have a question.
Yes, Heather.
Are there going to, is there going to be fencing up around the cars in this lot? That's one question. And then the second question is, is there an estimate on how many cars are going to be parked in that lot?
Why don't we let the, why don't we let applicant, Mr. Carnes respond to that? You might have to, there you go.
Okay, first answer the first question. We're going to go by the screening and work with the city on there's not going to be like a chain link fence or anything like you see maybe over in the city. You know, it's going to be aesthetically set for the neighborhood and for the community. So when you say fencing, there might be small fencing, not fencing even, probably, probably like a bar or something. But I'm getting ahead of myself. We're going to go by what the city wants. And we control the site plan and we're going to comply with what they want. You can be assured of that. And that would also include the location of the cars. Again, we will go by what the city site plan is suggested to us and we will comply with that.
That answer your question? The other part of the question was, do you have an idea of how many automobiles planning on selling from this location?
It, it, as lots go, it will be comparable possibly to lots you see, for example, catty cornered from this. There's a car lot. There's one up on twenty four of May. But again, the amount of cars that we can put there, we will follow what the city site plan will allow us to do. It's just not going to be a two or three car operation though, like you see some places. It's going to have maybe ten, twelve, thirteen cars, and that's just me talking. I've discussed and what his other lots have looked for in the past when he's worked.
That answer your question, Heather?
I don't think we're going to push them on the right away like they do on Nolan Road.
Yeah. That's probably a smart thing not to do there.
Yeah.
Do you know if the, the owner or the operator of this location will be actually doing any repairs other than cosmetic?
Detail, waxing, vacuuming, things of that nature. There'd be no mechanical work done on the site. I don't know what the zoning is. Is it C two? But there will be no night activity. There'd be only the detailing of the vehicles that are there that is customary in that business.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Does that clarify? Heather, did that clarify for you?
Yes, thanks.
All right, are there any other questions? Any questions for the city staff? All right. So we've had a motion by Commissioner Preston. Let's see if we can get a second here.
Second.
Mr. McLean, second?
Yeah.
Brian, when you're ready for the, the vote, we're ready.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson?
Some of us are ready.
Here we go. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Drier?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir? Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero six special use permit at one 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 five South Chrisler Avenue has been approved by us. It'll continue on to the city council meeting May fourth.
Okay, so we'll be up for May, there'll be enough advertising for the May fourth date? Yeah.
We first reading the city council, May, on May fourth. Yes, sir. And then, yes.
Question. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. We're looking forward to that place looking a lot better. So. You're welcome. We're looking forward to that place looking a lot better, so tell him thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll work with staff 100%. We're committed.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to move to the next item on our agenda, which is item number four. Case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero eight. Special use permit at two eight two zero South Crenshaw Road. Is the applicant present for this?
Mr. Chair, go ahead and ask one more time. I had everyone muted.
Okay, we're getting ready to discuss the special use permit for two eight two zero South Crenshaw Road for the bed and breakfast. Is the applicant present? If so, please say something. Who was the applicant? Jordan?
Cindy Strom.
Any poker?
I was gonna say. Trying to um unmute her, but her microphone seems like it may not be working at the moment.
I can see her, but I see that she's not, she's muted.
Can we get her on the telephone?
We could hear before, let's see if uh we can do that.
Well, if you can't let us know, we'll go to a different one and come back.
I'm gonna give her a call right now. We hold on just a few seconds, we'll see if we can get her on the line. I'm gonna give her a call right now.
I have her.
You have her, Miranda?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear her through my phone?
Yes, we can.
I can hear.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, they can.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and and start considering this case, so uh we're gonna ask the city's staff to give us their presentation for your case.
So. Um, and and just like last time, I'm gonna mute everyone, so Miranda, when she needs to speak, please uh remember to unmute yourself.
Yeah.
Um, this is case twenty four hundred oh three, uh special use permit. Uh Cindy Strom intends to operate a bed and breakfast Airbnb from her home located at twenty eight twenty South Crenshaw Road. The second floor will operate as the Airbnb. So if you look at the um the um vicinity map here, um talking about north of Eureka, along Crenshaw Road. In a semi-rural area, there there's a subdivision across the street. The area is uh with large rural lots, um zoned um RA uh residential agriculture. Um, across the street, we have a PUD zoned uh R two PUD, large lots, single families. And then we have um uh RA PUD, a large lot, single family to the southeast. And of course, um more rural residences uh with RA zoning along Eureka Road there to the southwest. As you can see from the aerial photograph, if this is a very deep property. Um, the house is right up by the road. Uh, access is actually from uh the property that's the twenty uh eight hundred uh property to the north. And uh there's a driveway and a pull-off, and then this drive goes south uh to this property that's sort of in a, in a hole lower than, down below um uh Crenshaw, and you'll see that in in a few minutes. So here's the site plan, a little different orientation, we're looking at, at it um with the the top being west, you can see that house um there and with, and then the dotted line easement that's on that larger lot that's to the right-hand side of it there. The rural home is on this three-acre elongated property, has a bedroom on the second floor with the king-size bed. It will have a bathroom and a shower and a toilet. Uh, guests are required to provide the the names of those staying at the home. Only two guests will be allowed at a time. Uh, the applicants will will keep uh noise in check uh because the owner will live on the property on the lower floor or or in other rooms within the building. Um, should they make a lot of noise, the applicant will first request that they lower the noise. If it continues, will inform Airbnb and have the the guests talk to them. And of course, uh calling the police to take care of a noise situation as a last resort. The property can accommodate uh more than two vehicles uh parked in in the permanent um easement north of the house where the driveway accesses the street. Uh, the Airbnb pa- application permits a stay for only two weeks. The site had been, has been inspected and approved by our state fires, fire department and the building inspections division as well. So here's that floor plan again, and you can see the second floor uh with the um, the room available for um the um for the Airbnb tenant. This is the notification zone. Showing all the areas within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the property that received notification. Real quickly, I'll I'll get, give you a tour through the area. As you can see, the house is down in in a, in a hole, so you can't access directly from Crenshaw, which is the reason for the easement from the neighboring property to the north. This is looking um northward up Crenshaw toward that driveway and toward the the tree line there on the right. Um, this is looking in the other direction, you can see the house uh to the southwest of where we're standing, across Crenshaw Road. Uh, this is that access road coming from the neighboring property to the north. Um, here's that access road again, you can see there's uh potential for a number of vehicles to park there. This is looking farther north up the road uh from that access driveway. And this is what's across the street through the trees that is that large lots subdivision that lies to the east. You can see the the house is peeking through the trees there. And this is, of course, looking back down, south past the house uh toward the the curve to the south in in Crenshaw over the hill. And um again, looking at the property dead on there. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. Uh, the bed and breakfast Airbnb shall obtain a business license in accordance with city code and comply with section five point zero one point zero zero four, which is article one, chapter five of the city code. Uh, the occupation license numbers shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. And number two, but the business must comply with all standards established in section fourteen dash four twenty of the city code. And number three, the bed and breakfast shall provide uh the safety requirements as outlined in section fourteen dash uh four twenty. So uh that concludes the presentation, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Uh, do commissioners have questions, Brian?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Heather.
Why isn't this presented to us as just a short-term rental instead of bed and breakfast Airbnb?
Because the applicant actually lives on the property, which is the definition of a BB, uh of a bed and breakfast and not a short-term rental.
Got it. Does this have a second entrance? Does the um the B and B part have its own entrance? First.
Um. You might, um, I would leave that question to the applicant, um, I'm not familiar with all the the front door and the back door and stairways and the accesses in in the interior.
Okay, we'll make sure we ask her, Cindy. Is there anybody, uh, other questions of city staff from commissioners? All right, um, let's go ahead and uh call the applicant up to the microphone. And even though we know your address, is, is she, can't she hear me?
They're not private entrance.
Hold on just a second. He- here you are. Now, they want you to state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Cindy Strom, my address is two eight two zero South Crenshaw Road in Independence. And uh in answer to your question, there is not a private entrance to the room here. But there are two, three entrances actually into the house. Um, there is a front door entrance, which there are steps to immediately go up to that room. There's a sliding back door entrance, and then there's a basement entrance.
Did you guys hear that?
Cindy, did that answer your question?
Yes, it it did. So I, so just for my clarity, so the person staying in the rental would be coming into your personal space to go to their space, correct?
Um, they come in the front door and immediately um to the right are steps that go up to the room. So they're not, they're in the entryway of the hall, but they don't go any further than that.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Does the applicant have anything else that they would like to tell us besides what was in the city staff's report?
I I don't, I don't think of anything to say.
Okay. All right, does any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant? All right, I don't hear any. Um. I'm gonna open up the public hearing portion, just in case somebody's there that wants to ask a question, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, who is this?
Weir.
All right, Rick, okay, go ahead, ask.
Uh, this is Weir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna ask the applicant, since she's applying for a B and B, a bed and breakfast, it, in her um application, it says she won't be furnishing any meals. Is that correct?
I read that too, Joe. I'm sorry.
Can you say that again?
That that is correct. I do not furnish any meals at this time.
Okay, do you have any follow-up, Joe, or is that, is that your question?
Well, I I understand what uh Brian said about the B and B, that's the question, but um it doesn't seem like it's a bed and breakfast if there's no meals. I guess it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, way the code's written, it doesn't matter.
Uh, that's fine.
I I'm telling you to agree with you, but I think that's okay. Point, point about that. Um, does any other commissioners have any other questions of uh Ms. Stram? Okay. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this case? All right, is there anyone here who has, is opposed or who simply has questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this case. And would ask the commissioners for motions or comments or whatever they feel moved to do. As long as it's appropriate in this meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve case number nineteen dash two hundred dash zero eight special use permit for two eight two zero South Crenshaw Road.
Okay.
With recommendations.
Got the right, okay. Okay, Commissioner Klein has has moved. Do I have a second?
A second.
Think she beat you, Virginia.
Oh, that's okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair, we probably should clarify case number here. Because certain numbers, it's appearing with two numbers. What is the correct in the case number?
It's like, it's a two zero case.
It's a two zero instead of the one nine? It's one nine on our paperwork.
Yeah, that was, it's been, it it's been changed because it was.
I amend my motion to case two zero dash two hundred dash zero eight.
Yes. Thank you, Cindy, and that's a good catch there, Billy, thank you. So now, so we, it's been moved and seconded. Do you need to, you have that down, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Drier.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner McLean.
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh.
Yes, case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero eight special use permit at two eight two zero South Crenshaw Road. Has been approved by us, this request will go to the city council on May fourth for the first reading. So uh thank you, Ms. Stram, good luck to you. Right. Our next case. Our next case is case number two zero one seven five dash zero one. Code amendment. All right, hit us, hit us with the code amendment.
Sounds good. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute everyone again, just for everyone's ears. Um, and just, I just did wanna just note that the um agenda had this as code amendment number forty-one, it's actually forty-two, I don't think that really matters, but just wanted to point that out. Um, the city proposes amendment number forty-two to the unified development ordinance related to off-premise advertising. This amendment uh clarifies the language of some provisions and reduces certain buffers in the city's off-premise advertising billboard regulations. The intent of this amendment is to bring city code in line with our peer communities. Prior to the adoption of the UDO, the city's zoning ordinance had no buffer restrictions for off-premise advertising from highway interchanges or bridges. The old zoning ordinance had a two-hundred-foot buffer from residential zone property and property used for other public uses. Finally, the only required separation from any property line was a ten, a minimum ten-foot distance from the rear property line. The UDO, which took effect in two thousand and nine, instituted tougher restrictions in all of these areas. These included buffers of one thousand feet from highway interchanges, bridges, and residentially-zoned properties and a ninety-foot separate. and a ninety-foot separation from all property lines. In the ten-plus years since the adoption of UDO, no new large off-premise advertising sign has been approved in the city. Staff believes the proposed amendment is sensitive to the needs of our residents and potential business owners while ensuring the Unified Development Ordinance is in step with peer communities. While the proposed changes reduce certain buffers and restrictions, they will still be more restrictive than the previous zoning ordinance and provide ample protections for our residents and pub, for residential and public spaces. The proposed buffers contained in this amendment are comparable to those of nine Missouri communities surveyed in our review. This amendment would make the following changes to section fourteen dash four oh six of, on off-premise advertising. One, clarify that off-premise advertising is permitted in zoning districts C two, C three, and I one. Clarify that off-premise advertising may be permitted only adjacent to certain roadways and are not permitted in the public right-of-way. Reduces the setbacks of off-premise advertising from property lines and right-of-ways to twenty-five feet. Reduces the setbacks from highway interchanges, bridges, and properties used for residential use from one thousand feet to five hundred feet. And finally, allows for flexibility in the height of future off-premise advertising signs to the circumstances for each proposed locations. The height of each sign shall be approved as part of the special use permit process. Uh, obviously, staff recommends approval of this, uh, UDO amendment. Um, at this time, I will answer any questions.
Okay, so commissioners have any questions for Jordan?
Jordan, what are the, what are the nine communities you were talking about? Do you know, do you?
Yeah, yeah, I have that information here. So, um, some of the communities we looked at were St. Charles, Columbia, Joplin, Gladstone, Liberty, Blue Springs, Lee's Summit, uh, Jeff City, and Kansas City. So we kinda took some locally and then some around the state. Um, and if you have any specific questions about those, um, basically the average for, let's see. So of the nine cities we looked at, six had buffers from interchanges. Um, the average number of that buffer, the average distance was five hundred feet. Um. Number of buffers, eight of those communities had buffers from residential district, and that average distance was around five hundred and forty-three feet. Um, and then the number of buffers from parks, there were four communities. Um, and that average distance was four hundred and fifty feet. So we do feel like we're right along with those kind of communities we looked at.
Uh, Jordan, does it? Does the state have any jurisdiction over the placement of these, or is it just our municipality?
So I know that, um, an applicant along an interstate highway in Missouri has to get approval from the state, but I don't believe there's any other restrictions. Um, I think it defaults to, um, city zoning ordinances. Well, they do have some restrictions, but there is, the state does have a permitting process, and obviously, this case is in tandem with the following case, and that billboard, uh, achieved all of those state requirements.
And that's, I mean, the, the case coming up is sort of why you had to look again at this UDO.
That, that's correct, yeah. Because of our, that one thousand feet from interchanges and some of those restrictions from residential properties, residentially-zoned properties, um, we needed to kind of relook at this again and see if there was anything, um, we can, could do. Um, as you guys will remember, when you, uh, looked at the uh, medical marijuana ordinance, you know, that buffer that we looked at was five hundred feet there. And you know, based on the way the city's laid out with commercial properties, abutting residential properties almost everywhere in the city, that really, that five hundred feet is a good buffer for us. It really restricts, you know, where it can be placed right away. Then you add those other things about being along certain thoroughfares only, um, other buffers, and we really, there's not much more area that's being permitted other than this area of town.
Okay, so that's, and that's kinda why I asked my question. We're, this is kinda protecting our roadways from becoming like the rest of I seventy between here and St. Louis?
Yeah, absolutely. This is pretty much the only, um, area that would, you know, another uh, off-premise advertising billboard could be, you know, as you said, there are some others along seventy. Some of those are, you know, sort of non-con, legal non-conforming billboards that, you know, were probably there, have been there for years, and, you know, we don't have any say over at this point, so.
Yeah, I, I don't mind an occasional billboard. I just didn't want saturation, so, uh. Uh, I'm glad to hear that that, that helps us out. Does anyone else have a question of Jordan?
The ones that are there, they're grandfathered in, correct?
Yeah, any existing billboard. So I, I do wanna point out the other sign that's there at, I guess Cable Dahmer Arena now, and across the street, the mall, those are not considered off-premise advertising. Those are signs for those locations.
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, the mall sign is an off-premise advertising. But the, the other, the large sign on this site is actually the sign for the building and not considered an off-premise advertising, because it advertises events at the center.
Okay, thank you.
Would, would. You know, earlier, I think it was our last meeting, we had a, a car wash that was wanting, that was going to locate by the mall, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't, isn't that area, I don't know that they were planning on putting up a sign, but wasn't that just a monument sign that was allowed there?
Yeah, this is the part of the city that allows monument signs. This off-premise advertising is sort of a separate beast than those on-premise sign.
Okay. So really, these billboard, uh. This is just for highway interchanges? Or is it for?
Code, there are.
Like, if I wanted to build a billboard up on Lee's Summer Road, could I do that?
Uh, I believe Lee's Summit Road is, it's probably allowed. Let me just double check. Yeah. So the road has to be designated a divided highway, highway, or major arterial. So it could technically, Lee's Summer Road could be, but because of the proximity to residential along pretty much the whole corridor, you'd be hard-pressed to find any allowable area there. So there are a few cor, a few corridors that are specifically prohibited, and that's Little Blue Parkway, Valley View, and Jackson Drive.
Uh, there's been some plans, uh, in the works, you know, to improve like the twenty-four highway corridor. Does that act that, does this impact that positively, negatively? Doesn't matter? Is it neutral?
I, I would say it's neutral, be, again, because of the proximity to residential along all of our major, um, thoroughfares in town. That pretty much eliminates any new billboard in those areas. Again, that what we're really looking at is this area along
Okay.
You know, these codes affect the whole city, but really what we're talking about when we're making these changes are a lot in these areas.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the city staff? Well, if there's no questions, we stop to have a public hearing, correct?
That's correct, yep.
All right. Public hearing is open. If anybody's here to speak for this UDO amendment. Yes.
Sorry, I had to mute you guys, so whoever was speaking will have to unmute themselves. Mr. Chairman, can you unmute yourself? Sorry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, was somebody wanting to speak, uh, uh, for the, for or against this case? Or who had just questions?
Try one more time, Mr. Chair.
This is the public hearing portion. This is the public hearing portion of this case. UDO amendment case. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak from the public, would like to speak and address this case? Okay. I don't hear anybody wanting to say anything about that. So I'll go ahead and close the port, the public hearing portion of this case. And request that the commissioners either make comments or motions.
Mr. Chairman.
Preston here.
And just, and you guys will have to unmute yourselves.
Go ahead, Commissioner Preston.
Mr. Chair, I move in, in the matter of case number two zero dash one seven five dash zero one, UDO amendment number forty-two. Off-premise advertising revisions be adopted as presented.
Next, sir, do I have a second?
I second.
Klein seconded? Okay. I believe we're ready for the vote, Jordan.
Right. Commissioner Greer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir? Commissioner Wiley? Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
And Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes, I believe it passed. I think it passed. I didn't hear all that, but if you didn't hear it, no.
Yeah, there was.
It was unanimous.
Okay, well, case number two zero dash one seven five dash zero one, UDO amendment number, oh, I don't know, is it forty-one or forty-two?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Off-premise advertising revisions has been approved. This amendment is scheduled for the first reading by the city council on May fourth. Our next item on the agenda is case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero nine, special use permit at one nine one hundred East Valley View Parkway. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, is, and is that Tom?
Yes. Tom Enright, Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you. We just wanna make sure that you're able to hear us. Uh, with the city staff, please give the report, please.
Yes, uh, QP Financial LLC requests special use permit approval to erect an outdoor advertising structure billboard at the event center at one nine one zero zero East Valley View Parkway. The site is just south by seventy north of Valley View Parkway in the parking lot of the event center. You can see from your, uh, uh, kind of vicinity map there, the approximate location of where it was gonna be. There's really not enough features on there to tell you exactly. Um, this is the zoning for the area. As you can expect, this southeast quadrant of I seventy and two ninety-one is primarily zoned for multifamily office and commercial use. The small oval shows the approximate fine location. Again, just to the east of there is the office building. Um, this aerial photograph, uh, shows the site. Uh, again, uh, this is the, uh, event center property. The event center's on the left there, the big building on the left, the parking lot. Parking lot goes to the east and the star is in the approximate location of that parking island, landscape island there. Uh, there's an office building to the, uh, to the east of that, um, there's a burger, excuse me, a, uh, Gold Corral south of, uh, the creek there, I mean, Little Blue River, I'm sorry. And to the north, you'd expect is the apartment complex and, uh, Independence Center farther to the northeast. Okay, this, uh, applicant's, uh, drawing shows the, uh, the, again, the location of the sign approximately uh, twenty-eight hundred forty-four, uh, feet from the, uh, the, uh, a bi-doctor overpass of, um, two ninety-one and I seventy. And it's shown in the little X, it's about seventy feet or so from the, uh, right-of-way of I seventy. Uh, this shows of the dimensions of this, uh, billboard. It's a digital billboard. It's, uh, sixty-four feet in total height from the ground to the top of the billboard. And it has an area of it being fourteen feet by forty-eight feet for a total area of six seventy-two square feet. This is an overhead view of the structure itself. It's sort of the V shape, which is, seems to be the typical design now for these billboards, instead of a, a true back-to-back billboard. Uh, you can see the pole that supports the whole structure there in the middle. Okay, here we go. This is, uh, the first picture. Uh, we're at the, again, the east end of the, uh, events or parking lot. That, uh, a yellow flag there with the, uh, that sort of looks like a, uh, uh, golf course green flag, uh, is the approximate location of where the pole will be. Uh. You can, uh, see the, uh, uh, car off in the distance there on the left. That is I seventy. So you can see the distance from, uh, I seventy to this, uh, location. Here, we're, uh, further, further west on the, uh, on the site, looking to the east, then you can see the, the sort of a metal pole with the yellow flag on it there on the left of this parking island. Um. Is it the, the Independence, uh, uh, Midwest Public Risk off in the distance. Uh, this is the building, Independence, uh, excuse me, Missouri Midwest Public Risk Office Building is directly to the east of the site. And this is the eastern drive that goes into the, uh, Independence Event Center parking lot. Uh, across the Little Blue, Little Blue River is the Golden Corral Restaurant. That's the, uh, river and all the area that goes with that between the parking lot of the event center and the restaurant. And here we're looking, uh, due east from the, uh, approximate location of where the billboard will be. That's the event center off in the distance. And these are the signs that are, uh, this is the, uh, event center sign. That's normally lit up, and now there's nothing going on there now, so it's not lit up with any advertising for the, uh, center. And this is the, uh, uh, billboard at the, uh, Independence Center. Uh, it is actually on a little, uh, triangle of land or a little piece of land that extends to the southeast of the event center. Uh, there used to be the, uh, other sign there that was a, sort of a digital billboard that went out of, that stopped operating and replaced it with this. And, uh, staff does recommend approval of this, uh, application with the following conditions. Uh, number one is maintain all necessary state and local licenses. Number two is create and maintain a landscape bed around the base of the sign. Number three is add a stucco or similar decorative feature to the base of the sign to create a more substantial look. Feature shall be a minimum of six feet in height and shall match the exterior of the event center. Number four is the pole and sign structure shall be color compatible with the event center building. Number five is this, uh, obtain all necessary building electrical permits prior to the construction of the sign. Number six is maintain conformance with pertinent sections of the city code, particularly section fourteen four oh six, which is the, uh, off-premise advertising section. And, uh, if you have any questions?
Can you just state again that V orientation for the sign? Which way is the narrow part of the V pointed?
Well, that would be facing the road here. I'm, I'm getting back to it again. Yeah, uh, the actual I seventy will be on the left side of the screen. And Valley View Parkway will be on the right side of the screen. So apparently they have discovered that there's some advantage to having a slight D there. Maybe provides more, uh, exposure. Maybe provides more uh, exposure than having it a flat back-to-back sign. Again, the pole is right there, is that little circle in the middle of the V. And then part of the support structure is below that and then that supports the sign panels. I think it's about thirty degrees between the, the two sign panels. But I'm sure the applicant can elaborate on that.
And just out of curiosity, uh, if this I'm just out of curiosity, if this were to blow over, it wouldn't hit that building.
Oh, no, it's quite some distance from that.
Okay. Not the event center, I mean the other building.
Oh, it's still uh, sixty, seventy yards from that anyway.
Okay. All right, is that something we take into account?
Well, on. You, you do usually on cell towers and things like that, but uh, we've never dealt with anything like this and uh, it's, it's set quite a bit of distance apart from anything, so. I don't really see that being an issue.
Okay. Are there any questions, city staff? Guys?
I have a question. This is Virginia.
Yes, go ahead, Virginia.
Is this sign going to interfere, interfere at all with the one that's for the event center?
Well, I'm not sure what the distance is between them, but there should be enough. It's probably a hundred yards, hundred fifty yards distance between them. Let's go back here to another slide and you can see the the uh, if you look at this uh, aerial photograph, you can see where the star is where the new sign will be. If you go further down here, right below I, the little I seventy thing, there's a little black circle here. And that's the sign for the event center.
Okay.
And it across the street to the northwest over here is where the uh, Independence Center sign is.
Right.
So that's the event center sign. So really there's enough distance there that they won't block each other out. And the sign for the uh, the new billboard is set back from the street from I seventy further than the uh, event center sign is.
But it's going to be positioned so that it can be read from I seventy?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't say this in the recommendations, but I'm assuming they have to follow the same uh, same rules as the uh, digital monument signs do that are in the city.
That's correct. At least eight seconds, no flashing, no movement, other than to change the message on the board. The state also has essentially the same regulations that we do in that, eight seconds, no movement, no flashing, no wall, anything like that. It's, it's message, then eight seconds and another message.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? Okay.
Not from me.
Uh, Mr. Enright, uh, you're welcome to give a presentation or if you want to say anything, um, uh, when you.
We're uh, we're available to answer any questions. I think you've covered everything that uh, that uh, we represent.
Okay, just, just for our records and because it's part of our tradition, if you would state your name and address just for the record, I'd appreciate it, even though you may not get any more questions.
Yeah, uh, Tom Enright, forty-four eleven West Hundred Eleven Terrace, Leewood.
Thank you, sir. Uh, does uh, commissioners have any questions of Mr. Enright? Okay, Billy, you didn't, you don't want to uh, pay for some billboard space or something? No?
Silence prevails on the southern column.
Okay, Johnny.
You hear me?
What was that? Go ahead.
Are you talking to me?
No. I'm just saying, do you have anything to say?
Okay, I'm, I, I want to ask the gentleman if he had to get a variance from the event center to, it looks like it's on their property. The sign.
Yes, we, we could talk to the event center initially uh, to, to even go forward at all, but yes, we are as, as far as I know, I say a variance, but uh, yes, the, the event center and the and the city staff have given us the go-ahead to, to, we wanted to uh, count pursuit of Missouri and got a Missouri license. And obviously the next event, the next step is the city license.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of the applicant? Okay, um, the public hearing portion of this case is open. Is there anyone that uh, has any questions? Or comments?
Uh, yes, uh, Ken, this is Truman Smith. One hundred West Hundred Twenty Terrace, Kansas City, Missouri. And I'm a consultant for QP Financial. I might be able to answer a few more of these questions. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Just some feedback.
Um, first of all, QP Financial does have the state permit. And in regard to the, the event center sign. The event center sign is located right on the boundary line. And the billboard is going to be located with a setback of, in excess of ninety feet. So the traffic is going to be easily, uh, that, the, 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 the things are going to be seen by the traffic.
Okay.
I might also add, we have agreed that there, there'll be no advertising on this billboard that will conflict with any, the naming rights. With any, for any company that holds the naming rights of the, with the arena. It'll currently escape the dom. There'll be no advertising billboard that will compete with the Purple Dormer.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for all the, sorry for all the feedbacks. I'd like to make this a lot of things, but it doesn't sound like this is coming across, you know, without the feedback.
I, I think, I think we.
The last plan, probably most important is the if the, when this billboard is erected, we have agreed in the contract to prepay the city four years in advance for the rent, which will add up to two hundred thousand dollars. And then after four years, that rent would be twenty-one hundred dollars a month for the, for the next four years. And then the rent goes up to twenty-five hundred dollars a month thereafter for a thirty-year lease.
Okay, thank you for sharing that with us. Appreciate that. Does any of the commissioners have questions?
So, what would be the advertising on the billboard?
Yes, we have agreed with the city that no less than fifteen times per year we will be advertising for the city, whatever the city would like for us to advertise.
Thank you.
Right, is there anyone else present that wants to make a pu- public comment or has a, a question of the applicant? Is there anyone here who's opposed? Okay. Hearing, no one tried to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this case.
Chairman, I'm gonna go ahead and mute all one more time, so you're all gonna have to unmute yourself to discuss.
And just ask the commissioners if they have any other questions or comments? Or motions?
Mr. Chair, Preston.
Yes, Billy?
Case appears to be clean. Therefore, I will move that we approve case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero nine special use permit matter of one nine one zero zero East Valley View Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Preston.
To the uh, recommendations of staff through one through six.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Preston's move, do I have a second?
I have a second. This is Rick.
Commissioner, second. Unless there's any other comments, we're ready to take the vote on this.
Commissioner Greer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. Weir? Mr. Wiley?
Uh, I'll take Miss Wiley, but yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number two zero dash two hundred zero nine special use permit at one nine one hundred East Valley View Parkway has been approved. It will be scheduled for the first reading by the city council on May fourth. Thank you, gentlemen, and good luck to you. Next item on our case is number seven, case two zero dash four hundred dash zero three short-term rental at three four one six South Chrisler Avenue. Is uh, the applicant present?
Mr. McCollum, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. We just wanted to make sure that you were here, so we'll go ahead and proceed. With the city staff, please give their report.
Yes, Matt McCollum seeks to operate a short-term rental at three four one six South Chrisler Avenue. The oval shows the location. It's on the northwest corner of uh, Chrisler and Thirty-Fifth Street. This is the zoning for the area. As you can sup, as you would guess, the site and everything in the immediate area is owned to our six single family. Uh, Chrisler is on the uh, east side of the applicant's property and uh, southeast Thirty-Fifth Street is on the south side of the applicant's property. This is the aerial photograph of the site, shows the site in the oval, again, at the northeast corner of this intersection. The applicant's house faces east, which is South Chrisler. Many of the houses in this area, particularly along Chrisler, rest on larger lots and are set back further from the road than other areas. The applicant's property, the driveway uh, circles the house on its north and west sides. As you can see from the uh, the, the aerial here, it comes on north of the house and then winds back behind the house and then exits onto Thirty-Fifth Street. Um, okay, here we're looking to the northwest at the front of the house. It's a single-story primarily brick structure. Uh, this is the driveway that's on the north side of the house. It has its own approach from uh, uh, South Chrisler. This is the south side of the house, the south elevation. And uh, where the driveway comes out onto uh, East Thirty-Fifth Street. Here, uh, this home uh, we're going in a counterclockwise direction here. This is the house that's immediately west of the site on Thirty-Fifth, East Thirty-Fifth Street. And the applicant's property is right to the, to the right of this house. Okay, this is the house that's on the southwest corner of this intersection. This, looking to the southeast, this house is on the southeast corner of the intersection. Then directly east of the applicant's property across South Chrisler, there's a larger home with a setback a good distance from uh, South Chrisler. And then this is the house that's immediately north of the applicant's site. Uh, the applicant's property is uh, on the left. Uh, staff recommends approval of this application with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online present, online platforms. Business must conform to all standards established by section fourteen four twenty of the city code. And the owner cannot occupy the premises with, when it's in short-term rental use. I would like to add, we, I did receive a, a letter from the Manor Oaks Homes Association that I was CC'd on this. Uh, actually, the planning commission was CC'd on this letter. It's from Rita O'Donnell. She's the president of the Board Directors of the Manor Oaks Homes Association. She is advising Mr. McCollum that uh, that there is a uh, restriction on the use of residential property in this subdivision for these sort of commercial purposes. So that, that's not to say the planning couldn't, planning commission shouldn't approve or take action on this case. And as far as any action by the uh, Homes Association, that's really up to them. So uh, I just don't want this to uh, to, you know, you shouldn't take that into consideration. He may be able to work something out with the uh, association, so just vote on it like you would normally vote on any other type of application like this. If the Homes Association has an issue with it, they are to solve that separately.
Okay.
And I can take any. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I just was gonna ask if that was the end of your report and.
I just got this letter today.
Okay, that's one to ask, make sure the commissioners all understand what Stuart was saying about the Homero Association, that would be a separate action on their account and we should not consider that. Um, is there any discussion about that or? Or does everybody understand that?
Mr. Chair, I think that's not new to the commission. Uh, Counselor Langford gave a comment on that in a previous matter. Perhaps he might want to speak to that again.
Well, he's not here to, right now, so uh.
Well, I think he is, though, unless he's not, he, he's on my list and he said he was here.
He, he, he texted and said that, we're talking about Mitch Langford.
Yes.
He, he said, um, he's not, he's only able to chat because he has no microphone and his reception is bad. So I think he maybe left the call.
There, his comments would have been the same as presented by city staff and the chair.
Okay, all right, I'm sure that you spoke with him and all that, so everything's copacetic, so. Um, I just wanted to make sure the commissioners understood that and we're gonna proceed on whether we think this should be uh, approved or not, and then if the uh, Homero Association has any issue, that's a separate matter and they can take that up with with them.
Um.
Can I speak? I'm sorry, Chair.
Yeah.
This just type in there that Jordan can call him or email him. He just can't talk. He could type the, he could type to the issue, but he cannot verbally chat.
I, I, thank you. I, I do see that now. Um, I think that uh, um, I, I think we can go ahead and proceed um, like Stuart suggested. So is there any other questions or comments to city staff?
I do have a question.
I do have a question. This is Cindy. Um, so number three, the owner cannot occupy the premises on what's, on, when it's a short term rental. Why is that?
Well, the difference between a short term rental and a bed and breakfast that we went through earlier is that the applicant is not present in the home. So, Mr. Mr. McCollum intends to, when he rents out the home, he intends to take the travel trailer that you saw earlier here in one of these pictures, that one, and go stay elsewhere. If he was going to stay in the home when they had guests, it would be a real, a true bread and bed and breakfast and not a short term rental.
Okay, that makes more sense.
We discussed that here at the staff level before we wanted to clarify that.
Okay. And I'm struggling to remember. This is a big house.
Yeah.
And so, didn't we have discussions about how many bedrooms and how many people could be in the house? Stuart?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, did you mean about this particular house or any house in general?
Well, I think the other house in general, there was a discussion about, wasn't I don't know, it just seemed to me like maybe I'm misremembering, but it seemed to me like there was about a capacity. Because we were concerned that somebody would be, this is a large house, I'll give you that, but we were concerned that somebody was gonna put a lot of people in a house. And the neighbors may not like it, but this house could certainly hold a lot of houses. I just don't remember the particulars of it.
I think we have a limit of two people per bedroom, and he has four bedrooms, so that would be a maximum occupancy of eight.
Okay, I, if that's what it was, that's fine. I just couldn't recall what it was. Yes, go ahead, Virginia.
The house looks extremely big, but there's a very big swimming pool right in the middle. About, around, I mean, the bedrooms are around the swimming pool.
I think that's where the skylights are that you see in the photograph.
But swimming pool is right under that. The swimming pool is right under that, or it has been in the past. I've been there many times. I don't know, maybe they took the pool out. I don't know.
Well, I suppose we could ask the applicant once they somebody else wanting to, one of the other commissioners wanting to speak.
Is that trailer parked in the driveway of the house?
That is correct. That's legal for him to park there, if that's your question.
I mean indefinitely? Like
It would be best to ask him that question.
But I mean, is it, is it legal to have a trailer that someone's in, in a driveway for
Well, he's living in the trailer there when he's not in the house. The trailer will be elsewhere in RV Park or some other place. You can't live in that trailer while it's in the driveway, if that's your question.
That's my question.
Yeah, they, no, that's illegal to do that.
Okay, got it.
So with the trailer there, does he have enough parking to have eight people there?
Well, as you can see from that, this is the driveway on the north side. Well, let me go to the aerial here. As you can see from the aerial, I mean, it's a pretty long driveway and back on the east west side of the house, that driveway there is, that driveway section there is pretty wide. You could probably park two cars side by side there. I didn't really see that as a, an issue, as parking of vehicles. And besides, the trailer is not going to be there when there's somebody staying there. So I don't, I didn't see parking as an issue there. In fact, I think you can see from that aerial, there's a little car parked behind the house right now. And they're parked in a vertical position compared to, or horizontal versus a vertical. So I don't see that as an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, I think we'll go ahead and want the applicant to give us any information that they may want to share.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. We, we need just, we just give you this opportunity to share any other additional information if you want to, and then before you do so, if you could just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, sure. My name is Matt McCollum and my address is three four one six South Chrisler Avenue, six four oh five five.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to start off by saying that, you know, this is my home. I'm not an investor using this for short term rental as, as a regular business or anything. I take great pride in my home and I live here with my fifteen year old son. We're the only two people that live here. And I'm, I'm basically using the fees that were, that would be generated from this to offset, you know, my cost of living, including utilities. So, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of where I'm at with this. The, the fees that would be charged are not it's, they're not inexpensive. It would be a rate that's, that's fairly high as to, you know, try to vet the best renters possible in this situation.
Yeah, an earlier person had a question about whether there's, there is a swimming pool in the center of the home.
Yes, that is correct. There is.
Okay. And I'm I'm assured, maybe you can assure me that if you're gonna do this, you have all the required insurances in case somebody falls in the pool.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Okay. Okay, and I'm also you also have been made aware of what the city is recommending for you to do, and you're, you're agreeable to doing all those, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, is there anything else you'd like to tell us or share with us?
I, I think that's all for now.
Okay, well, that's fine. We're just giving you the opportunity. Do any of the commissioners have questions or Mr. McCullough, McCollum?
I do. This is Cindy McLean. Are you, are you going to, are you registered with VRBO or any of the other Airbnb platforms?
Yes, that's how I will be advertising.
Okay, thank you.
Which one in particular, or are you just gonna pick a couple?
It would, it would be Airbnb and VRBO.
Okay. All right, that's great. Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. I'm gonna open up the public portion of this meeting. Is there anyone in our virtual audience that would like to speak in favor of this case? Okay, is there anyone would, wishes to speak that has either
wishes to speak that have either
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, identify yourself and and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, I was getting feedback from you, but my name is Mark Tuning. I live at one two one two six Oak Ridge Road in the Manor Oaks subdivision. I don't think that this business is appropriate for this area. I do have concerns over the amount and the size of the house, as, as was alluded to. The applicant has indicated that he is going to rent this out to parties of eight, and he is not going to be present on the premises while the parties are there. There is a pool in the area and, or in the, in the house itself, and it just lends itself to a very bad situation. I know what was said earlier about the homeowners association issue. However, I, I do need to make a comment. I am a member of the board. The property, when it was sold, was sold subject to a declaration of restrictions. And pursuant to that, the applicant does not possess the right to conduct a business in his residence. That is something that was restricted at the time. There are a hundred and seventy seven households in Manor Oaks, and they are reliant on those restrictions and the board to enforce those. And so if the applicant goes forward with this, it's really not fair to the applicant because that places us in a position to take action against him in order to preserve that right, and if we don't, then those restrictions are waived, and that, that's the awkward situation that it puts everybody in. But in any event, with that being said, I will, I will leave it to the commission.
Okay, well, thank you for your, your comment. Is there anyone else in our virtual audience that wishes to speak about this case or who has questions? Okay, Harry Dunn, I'll declare the public hearing portion of this case closed. Do I have any comments or motions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Preston?
Absent in the comments and the fact that this is a no cause for us not to proceed in the matter of case number two zero dash four zero zero dash zero three short term rental at thirty four sixteen South Chrisler Avenue. I move for approval citing the recommendations of staff numbers one through three.
Okay, Commissioner Preston's moved. Do I have a second?
I second.
Heather can have it.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Wiley has seconded. I, for one, do appreciate the comments of the, the gentleman with the homeowner board. But I think, I'm no attorney, but I, I believe that's just something that they're gonna have to do to enforce their own restrictions and covenants if that's what they wish to do. So we're just gonna go ahead and take a vote on whether we think that this is an appropriate use and that's if it passes, that's something that the homeowners association is gonna have to take up with Mr. McCollum. Is that, again, is that the recommendation of city staff to do that way?
That's the way to do it, yes.
Okay, all right. So, having said that, we're ready to take the vote.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir? Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes, case number two zero dash four hundred dash zero three short term rental at three four one six South Chrisler Avenue has been approved and it's just not going on to the city council.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. That was our last case tonight. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Unless there's any changes or additions, minutes will stand approved as written. Next item is, if any commissioners have any thing they would share with city staff or vice versa?
I'm just super happy you have my real email.
For getting that corrected, we apologize. That was the one we had on fire, the other one we had on file with the city clerk, so thank you for letting us know and hopefully you'll get emails from now on.
Okay.
Jordan, I, I did wanna, I mean, I, I'm, there's probably nothing that can be done about this. I don't know if anyone else has noticed this, but the, on Nolan Road, where the old FedEx building used to be, um, a, a, maybe one, maybe two of the rental car places next to it have, are now parking their cars in that lot.
Okay, we have had this issue before, so we will
I mean, like, I know no one's going anyplace, right, and so they have, I'm sure they have a surplus of cars. But, I mean, it's it's like, you know, I, I noticed it the other day and then noticed it again, and it's, it's like a, it's like a car lot.
Yeah, okay, no, we will, thank you for that. We will look into it and take appropriate action if it's called for.
Jordan, while we're on Chrisler Road, a lot of activity is there. There's several stretches of the retaining walls along Chrisler that's gonna fall on somebody eventually. I think some of that is around the twenty six or twenty seven hundred block of Chrisler. And some, I think, are between Thirty Fifth and Thirty Ninth straight on the east side, all of it to the east side of Chrisler. But some attention needs to be given to that because somebody will eventually sustain serious injury when that wall collapses.
Okay, yeah, we will look into that, see if it's a property owner issue or a city issue and get the proper letters sent and notifications sent, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, Dan?
Yes.
Are you the organizer of this website?
I, yes.
I can be, I, I've got mine fixed, so you can show my picture now.
Where are you? I don't see you.
Where are you?
She's gonna, she's, he's had me blocked the whole time.
I, hey, it had nothing to do with me. I see your initials. I don't see your picture yet, though, Virginia.
It's there. It says, ask the organizer to make me a presenter.
Next time. You're the last few minutes of the meeting. I don't think we're gonna do that, but okay.
I thought that I would wait till the very last, but I did comb my hair. I brushed my teeth. I was ready. I was ready for my picture to be shown.
Hopefully, next time, we'll, we'll be able to show your bright, shining face.
Thank you.
Okay.
This was a good job on everybody's part. I'm impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it went way better than, than the first time we tried it.
Yeah, we'll just have to work on that cadence of me muting everyone and then you guys unmuting after the public comment. That's the only way we're gonna be able to do it with call in people, so just keep that in mind for next time. We'll have to pause and let, you know, pipe up and that kind of stuff, so.
It's not easy. I did live church for Easter for my congregation, and that was challenging.
Oh, my goodness.
Some people just kept unmuting themselves, no matter how many times I muted them.
Yeah. When is the next meeting, Jordan?
I believe it's the twenty I believe it's the twenty-eighth, yeah, April twenty-eighth, in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't plan on going nowhere.
Yeah.
Be right here.
I was supposed to be gone.
Darn it.
All right. All right. I know we have to do. I really don't like doing this. Let's, it's very difficult.
Yes.
So having said that, I think everybody did a good job. And I, I hope I'm coming through okay. I, I don't think I'm causing any feedback.
No.
You're good now.
All right, so, having said that, I'm gonna adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-five PM. Hey.